This is the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. It's May 28, 2025. And I will call this meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance
To the flag
The United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will now leave the roll call. Deborah Kelly.
Present.
Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
Amy Arsabala. Tiana Gresham. Nicholas Champa, I'm here. Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Ayesha Ali. Agnes Kalapula-Banya. And Kevin McNeil.
I'm here.
Okay. January Adams, our director, is also here.
Yes.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are available at the reference desk. We will have two public comment portions. The first one will open now. Is there any member of the public who would like to say anything? Still no, huh? Okay. Moving on. I think we've all received a copy of the minutes. Deborah, did you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the April 23 meeting?
A motion to accept the minutes?
Okay. Amy and Kevin may even second it. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing no discussion. Please indicate. Those in favor of passing this motion, please indicate by raising your hand. This motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. So we shall go to January's director's reports. First, the financial report. January, would you like to say anything about it?
I will say that we're right on schedule.
Okay.
And there's nothing really, to me, nothing unusual here.
Yeah. I agree. I agree. Would anyone else like to make any comments or ask any questions about the financial reports? Well. Seeing no further questions. January, would you like to discuss your program report?
I'll just give you the highlights. We had the Adult Services Department scheduled on 56 adult programs. That 774 people attended. And a highlight was we had a new lecturer come in who talked about bird watching. And that apparently was a big success. So that was very nice. And the Youth Services held 41 in-house programs that 1,298 people enjoyed. And they also did an outreach event. They went over to Clamart School's Buddy Dash Dance for special needs kids on April 25. And they gave out bookmarks and stickers. And the young adult librarian hosted a group of special needs students from its center school for a library jobs tour on May 7. And our annual summer reading buddies program has closed because we have enough applicants. And so we've got 19 teens who volunteered. And these are the highlights.
Thank you. Can you invert, just like a one sentence, tell what Polaris does?
Polaris is the it's the heart of the library. It's how people look up books. It's how we catalog books. It's it's when you come to any note for a book, you use the computer. That's Polaris.
Okay. That's what I
It was more than one sentence.
Some great authors wrote in run-on sentences anyways. Okay, thank you. There is no president's report. There is some correspondence.
Yes.
Does anyone have any comment on the first three items of correspondence? The list and the judge.
Oh, Spanish? No.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just let's say it was interesting reading. I mean, especially this one with the the American Library. The, what is it? The I M.
IMLS.
IMLS. It's like I didn't even realize. It was 75 employees. 12 left.
The IMLS is puts out a lot of grants. And what the way it works is they'll give a grant to the state library here in New Jersey. And then the state library bubbles grants out to the libraries in the state. So this directly affects us.
Yes. Yes.
I was interested in reading how many of the libraries take a real active part when there's an emergency. And has I don't think this library has ever taken in people who were had no place to sleep. Or is that true?
Not that. But during Sandy, we had people coming in to get warm.
Yeah.
We had people coming in to charge.
It's important. It's an important place. Is the library like in an event of a power outage? I know like certain places and buildings are given certain priority to, you know, things.
For some reason, we still had power right after Sandy. I don't know.
You don't have we don't have a generator.
No, we don't have a generator. Thought about it, but
I think the city are just in loose power.
I think you're probably on the same grid as the municipal building and the police station. So I would think you'd be first to be restored.
Does the do either of those buildings, police or municipal building, have a generator? Both. Both. Okay, good. That's a lot of money on those generators. They're not something you get at Home Depot. Yeah, 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 of course.
Oh, yeah.
They have to be able to almost run at full capacity, I would imagine.
Now, the article mentioned that there's a Stafford Act that is a federal program that gives out money in emergencies. And that libraries apparently are not eligible. The article seemed to indicate that there's efforts going on to make libraries eligible for funds through the Stafford Act, which funnels down with FEMA as their biggest distributor. So I don't know whether I don't believe we're in a period where the federal government is trying to increase funding for many things. But Okay, it's good to know. Is there any other any other comments on any of the correspondence? I have four correspondence items that we have.
So the person who wrote about the book, I forget what it's called. Where you have my park. Do you have a name for it?
The Little Free Library.
Yeah. What does it entail to actually implement? Is that something that comes from libraries? Or is that from somewhere else?
Usually, I think it's individualized.
Yeah.
I've seen it in a lot of neighborhoods.
There are several parks in town that do have them. It's funny. My husband sponsored the one in Quailbrook. I can't remember the name of the park though. On New Brunswick Road. Near the golf course.
I've seen that.
With the crocodile. It's the one that looks like Snoopy laying on the on his house. But there's one in Colonial Park. There's one in Castleton Park. There's one in it's not called Quarry Park anymore. Donald Labet Park, I think. But several of our parks do have them. So I don't know what she's talking about.
So she goes to Dillard Park.
Dillard. Okay. Oh, Dillard does not have one.
Now, where is Dillard Park? Which one is that?
Off of Beekman and Franklin Park.
It's where Society Hill is.
Oh, yeah.
Right behind the C V S on 27.
Okay. Yeah, 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 okay.
So it's really individuals? And then I guess we jump to the company and they set up the
Right, like you build it yourself. And then you put it up and you get like a license, I'll call it, from Little Free Library. And then you're in charge of stocking it. And you either, you know, the library could make like I noticed we have all those free books and you could donate them. But, you know, they like the ones in the parks. To me, they have the children's books.
Yeah.
You know, I know Chris, my husband, he tries to do like one shelf of adult books and one shelf of children's books at the one by Quailbrook. So and the kids love it. Someone put bubbles in there. And, you know, that's just kind of fun.
And so they go to the park and they take a book and read it and put it back when
Yeah, or they can keep it. Or you can keep it and you can put other books in it. So that's what we'll try to do. We'll put books in it or, yeah.
In exchange, that's a good idea. I've seen them all over.
Yeah.
Some people put them in front of their house. And they make them match their house. Yeah.
So Bob LeCort's been distributing some of these. He tells Bob tells me Bill Connell is building one. So it'd be relatively minimal effort for the library to fill that with books. Well, we'll check giving away or selling.
Yeah. Donations like
I would think it would be a minimal effort to supply the books. But to actually go around weekly, that would be a little more than a minimal effort. If there was somebody
But there's usually like a steward of them.
Yeah, yeah.
My husband is a steward, you know. So he'll drive by and just kind of make sure. Because there was an issue. The door was falling off and it was leaking. So he keeps it, you know, things like that. So you need a steward of it. So that's what usually happens. So, you know, Bill Connell, like Phil said, you know, if he's willing to build it and put it up, you know.
I have heard that there is a company that sells the box for about $60 without a post. But that might be a start.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's something each of us can individually think about.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to build a box.
With the job you did with the shelves out there, I'm pretty sure you'd be able to build a nice
Yeah, I have some paint left over. I covered. Okay. So is this something the library wants to give out? Well
It certainly supplies books. That's not a problem.
Yeah. But that's involvement. That's and
We need to do much more than that.
Well, as Deborah said, we probably need
Somebody.
A person to be a steward of maybe one or two that are close to the
Or do we think could we do a, like a weekend? Like have a little project seminar here? Like, you know, we did the Build a Rain Barrel seminar, like the township did that. Could we do a build a build a Little Free Library seminar? Would Bill Connell be happy to? I mean, my husband just had back surgery. I mean, he'd do it. But, you know, he's
I think that's something we'd have to where give some thought to.
I would be willing to volunteer. I mean
To be a steward.
Right. I mean, it's not something you it's just gonna take eight hours a day, five days a week. Right? You drive past once or twice a week.
You do a drive-by. He goes by like once or twice a week. And, you know, if it's empty, he tries to fill it. We have like a rubber made thing with books in our house that he'll call he'll ask people at work, bring in old books. If you have any kids' books from your kids and
Well, I think as individuals, probably something that would be very interesting. Whether we want to officially have the library do it besides
The issue so far.
I think probably you have enough work for your employees.
Well, also doesn't seem like that's what libraries do. It seems like it's an individual.
It's an individual.
So if it was practice that all public libraries do that, then that makes sense. But I don't think that's the case. I think it's individual. So I think supplying the book also is like probably a nice thing. And then
Right, because probably the books if somebody has wants to do, just do it. I know because in Franklin, I know that would be something that I wouldn't I mean, you know, if you had a couple of volunteers to
Yeah.
to do that, I know I would definitely be interested. Or wouldn't mind being involved with something like
Question for right now. Should we respond to Annalise Diaz Diaz for
Well, it was addressed to me.
Oh, that's right. That's right. It's the name. Yeah. And I went to the school and gave her a proclamation. Wonderful. Along with three other people who Wonderful. I mean, a commendation. Along with three other kids who wrote me. So well, she's been responding to it. I told her that I would be bringing it up here. Okay. So
And you said somebody's already building the
Well, I'm told that Mr. Connell is currently constructing one. I don't think he knows about this.
Oh, but he's
Maybe he could provide that location if he doesn't have a location for it yet.
Yeah. I'll follow up. I'll find out if it really is. At $60, that might be something that the library might be interested in also providing or the town. Yeah, one or the other. We'll discuss that. Sure. But I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
Always promoting reading.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll I'll stand as a volunteer to build or install one cubby.
That's cool.
Okay. So I think we can move on from this then. Is there any old business? And is there any new business? I think we should probably start with our proposed budget and then go on to other new business after that, if there is any. So we have a budget. And we have, I think, something like a 5.8% increase in the value of all the the true value of all the properties in Franklin Township. Which means that our our funding goes up by that 5.8%. 5.8? No, whatever. 12%? The total valuation of the town will be 12%. Wow. Well, that's that's wow. That's This is the formula. That gives us how much we go up. Well, that's the third mill. Well, but the third mill isn't set. That third mill is calculated. And so maybe it only came out to 5% of the library. I don't know. I don't know the calculation. Third mill is for the library. And it's on the total amount true valuation that the Somerset County Board of Taxation publishes. And I thought I saw the numbers as 5.8%. At any rate
I think it was on that spreadsheet from the state library.
2025 amount needed to qualify for the one-third mill. And let me just look here. For Franklin Township Franklin Township in 2024 was 15.2 billion. And well, the year prior was 14.3. 6.29% according to these numbers on here. At any rate
There's a column, I think, that shows the difference between years.
Yeah. At any rate, it's large.
Yeah.
Whether it's six or 12, it's larger, twice as large. So with that, January, would you like to make any comments on your, on the budget?
Well, we were fortunate again that we did it's a larger amount. And what I did, what I do every year is I go through and look at what we spent to see if we had enough money to begin with. And the lines that, for example, the alarm system where it was 4,500, I don't expect that to go up. But I put in a 3% inflation on that line. And that's what I did. So each line either has a 3% increase or it has an increase based on this year's usage. Or it just stayed flat. Because I know we're not going to use that much money. And then the last the last page is revenue, what I expect to come in. That's dating the allocation from the township, interest income, copier income, and bonds income.
50 cents.
And then the last page is I explained each line and why I did what I did.
My experience is that January puts together a budget that holds. And how much do we have in
May have your attention. In just five minutes, in the children's room, we will be having our Wizard of Oz Book and Movie Club. This is for students in grades three through six. Wizard of Oz in the children's room in five minutes. Grades three through six.
What how much do we have in our fund balance?
The capital fund?
Yeah.
It's about 5 million?
Because the township looks at that. And the township has the ability to take a portion of that. If they choose to. And I know while I'm not necessarily in favor of that, I know that the CFO calculates that every year. So if we're a saying of mine is the only thing worse than tax and spend is tax and not spend. Because then you have the people's money and you're not doing anything.
We are, but to do something.
Okay. So that's where I'm going.
That's coming.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying is if we collected the money from the people, we need to return it by providing service.
Right.
So, okay, good. All right.
The only question I had was on the alarm system. I feel like your year-to-date is already at 7,500 and you're only budgeting 46,000,600.
That's because the first year that we had that down at the branch, it was rolled into the cost of installing it. And now we're on a contract. So it'll go back.
All right, so it was just really high.
All right.
Just a comment that I'd like to make about the capital funds. We just spent, what, $1.8 million of what we had to put the gallery roof up. And now the the rest of the building, the flat roof, is coming due. Now, it won't be nearly that expensive, but still in all, we must keep some money in our reserve for capital improvements and also for maintenance of the existing things, which some people call capitalize. I don't, but
I looked it up. It does include maintenance.
What's your maintenance capex a year? With capital expenditures? I'm sorry. I go jargon. What's your maintenance capital expenditures a year? Like on the building and such?
Every year?
Yeah. Like what do you budget for that?
That would be building.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, it's
Building maintenance?
More than one line. It's building maintenance.
Maintenance, supplies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then equipment service is also part of that.
Okay.
Equipment repair.
Let's see. It still occurs that some things don't occur every year or even every two years. But maybe a HVAC system might come every 15 to 20 years. And in case of the roof, what was it, 20 or?
And the HVAC is about the same age.
Yeah.
And don't forget too that I'm working with the architect to get proposals about doing some renovation work on the interior of the building. Make it function better. So I'll say this, I'll say this because Debbie's new that since this building was renovated the first time, how people use it has changed. There used to be a lot of traffic using our computers. Now people are coming in with their own computers and they want a place to sit and be quiet and use their own laptops. So the building isn't working as efficiently as it used to. So that's what we want to
Makes sense.
And I also want to make this room bigger.
Yeah.
And there's some other things that are on the agenda.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the budget as presented?
I yeah, I looked at it at home and I don't see a problem with it. And I do, I will make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Okay, Kevin has made a motion.
I will second the motion.
Good.
Deborah's seconded?
That's a solid one.
And since we, again, are doing things backward. But is there any other discussion on the budget?
I don't know. But we're also doing another motion to do this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Are those in favor of adopting the 2025, 2026 library budget? Signify by raising a hand. I see four votes. This is unanimous. And it's also very important that we, as we just discussed, that we put money toward the capital fund for future projects. And is there a motion to restrict $885,000 to dollars for this purpose? two dollars for this purpose?
Yes, and I just have a question, I guess it's for the mayor. Um, I know when you, when he, when he was talking about money going back to the township, is there like a a table for that or, or?
There's a formula.
A formula of this.
Uh, I don't, I don't know the formula.
Okay, because I know when I worked for the government, we used to have a mad rush at the end of each fiscal year because since, you know, we were allocated money by Congress.
Use it or lose it.
Use it or lose it, and if you didn't, it didn't, just like, just like my vacation time. It was, uh, so it was like, um, but with the vacation time, well, I usually donate, you could donate it to other people, you know, somebody had a baby, new on a job, doesn't have the time, you could donate your time. But that would be, you would get a wish list, you know, and it would be a rush because it kind of seems, uh, some people thought it was wasteful, but it was, it is because, because you save money this year. You know, if you didn't spend it all next year, you would, you, you know, you would, you would get less and and you might need it, so I was just wondering if, if if that's the case, I mean, we shouldn't be, you know.
Well, my understanding from talking to January over the couple of years, we don't have to absolutely spend it, but we have to know what, we have to put it aside for a particular purpose. Even though we're not going to spend it this year, we can put it aside for this purpose because we know the roof is twenty years old, the flat roof is twenty, so.
And it doesn't have to be a specific project, right? You could just say for, you know, you.
We should, we should, I should come up with a list.
You should come up with a list. Okay. Okay, but for right now, just this is sufficient, I guess, to.
Right, now you just need to say that you're gonna, um, put the surplus towards, towards the capital fund and then I will give you a list of what, what the, what the money on.
All right, so the list already exists, January has been working on it for some time now, so it's not, it's not just.
Something made up, like, this is something I could, uh, all right, so I definitely will, um,
restrict.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to, um, to restrict, uh, restrict an eight, eight hundred eighty-five thousand and eight hundred eighty-five, two thousand towards a capital fund for future projects and maintenance and fixed assets. That's the motion, that we restrict that surplus.
Amy has seconded.
Yeah, it's harder ones. Waiting for you to talk.
I went to.
It was hard to do the words, yeah.
Well, you know, you know that January is gonna put the words down. Actually.
He said it, he was fine.
Yeah, okay.
But if he weren't, if he weren't, January, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the two dollar part begs the question, how did you come up with this?
I subtracted, um, on the revenue page, the five million, one hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred six. I subtracted from that what our budget is going to be, which is four million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred four dollars, and that was the difference.
Didn't they get harder for me with the two dollars because it's.
Well, okay.
Let's see it.
There's a difference between engineers and bankers.
See, I just would've said not the two dollars. I just would've said eight eighty-five.
An engineer would've, would've put it down to three significant figures, but a banker has to go for.
Motion to amend them?
Yeah. That's a few shekels among friends, right, so, yeah.
Well, okay, so where we are on the, um, agenda is that, um, let's see, where the heck did the agenda go?
Have a motion?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And Amy seconded.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion to restrict eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for capital and future projects? No additional discussion? Those in favor of this motion signify by saying that this motion has passed unanimously as well. So, now, uh, is there any other new business?
Yes. So the, um, town is hosting a gay pride event at the gazebo on June seventh, Saturday, June seventh, from, I think it's one to three, I'm sorry, twelve to three. I might be getting the timeline, um, but it is June seventh in the afternoon. And they are wondering if the library wants to participate in some way. Participating could, if you want a table there, you'd have, that, we'd have to decide now and you can get a table there, or it could also be just somewhere in the lobby, having a small display featuring books that you have with that, uh, theme.
I think we're already too.
So that people could walk in, they, they may be using the bathroom, but they could also be told, library has a, accommodates this, this, um, segment of our population and they have a display.
Right.
Brings people into the library.
I'm pretty sure that, because I think we do this every year, with, um, the book carousel that's out uh, right behind the circulation desk, so we would automatically be doing, uh, gay books for that. And we could do a table, um, and we could have a couple staff people come and get out our usual stuff that we give out, you know, calendars and bookmarks and things like that.
So the main organizers, uh, councilman, Tasslin, I will give him your contact information.
Yes, and I'll be happy to talk to him.
Great.
Yeah.
Good job.
That's an easy.
President. Okay. That, we'll settle that without a, uh, without any motions, sure. Okay. Is there any other new business?
So, so full disclosure, we turned off the cameras before we seconded and voted to go into executive session. That was done.
Okay. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I will make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of this motion? Four, yes. Okay. I guess we. Would anyone like to make a motion concerning a gift?
So the motion would be to, um, provide the contract or to inform the attorney, is that the way you're gonna do it, through the attorney?
Yeah, well, I was gonna fix this and then send it, send it to.
Oh, to approve the contract.
Okay.
Motion to approve the contract for the donation.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, the con, uh, the contract for the donation for the gift agreement between the family of Francis and Anna Di Amate and the board of trustees of the Franklin Township Public Library.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? Those in favor signify by raising their hand. We have a very agreeable, it's unanimous again. Okay. Is there any, is there now any member of the public who would like to speak? If none, we should, um, go on to, uh, agreement on the next, the next meeting. Now, I have a request that, uh, rather than meeting on, uh, the fourth, rather than moving, meeting on the twenty-fifth of June, um, I would like, uh, that we meet on the eighteenth of June. This is a personal request by me so I can attend a graduation for my grandsons.
That's where they graduate.
Scotch Point High School.
Wow, wonderful. Um, I don't have a problem.
That's fine.
Do you have a problem with that date, Amy?
Okay.
Nope, I left my phone in the car. So, but that's all right.
Okay.
How do we do that?
I guess by motion.
By motion.
You'll need to motion?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to change the next meeting date from June twenty-fifth to June eighteen.
Thank you.
Which is the third Wednesday.
Which is the third Wednesday instead of the fourth.
Yeah, no.
I'll, I'll second that one.
Eighty seconds, okay. Any discussion on that motion?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Those in favor of, uh, passing this motion signify? Okay?
Okay.
Opposed? Well, it's four nothing, four to nothing. Uh, thank you.
Um, you should've made a stipulation that you take some pictures and show.
Show us, yeah, we need proof.
We need proof. We need proof, you have to bring the, bring the proof with, anyway.
Is there a, um, motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Okay.
We are adjourned.
Right, that was the most eventful.